Call the meeting in order. Dr. Deegan, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Tonight, we're gonna have Tamiya and Jeremiah from McCarthy High School to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sherman.
Here.
Dr. Bridges.
Here.
Mr. Jester.
Here.
Ms. Claude Belter.
Here.
Ms. John. Colonel Waters.
You have some special guests with recognitions for tonight?
We do. First, we have Mr. Charles Kirchen. And I've asked Mr. Kirchen if he'd like to share, and as he's approaching the podium, Ms. Hatch, how many Teachers of the Year did we have this year in competition of our ... Did we have like 24 schools?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four schools. That's the largest number we've had since I've been here, so it's pretty stiff competition. So Mr. Kirchen, he won, and I don't know if everybody knows this, but we had a local car dealer, the Nissan dealership, he was blessed with an automobile for the year. Pretty sweet. And so, he's taking me for a ride, taking me to Wayne's afterwards. It was a struggle to go to school the next day with that car and take off. Well, thank you for this honor. Certainly, we're an excellent field of candidates, and I think I was only selected out of some category that I can't imagine maybe the most mistakes made without getting fired. But the one thing I would like to acknowledge, a couple of years ago, when we won our first academic championship at Eisenhower High School, we asked the kids to fill out a list of names of teachers that it would be best for us to go back and thank that were key in us winning that championship. And although I was a little bit hurt, all of the teacher names were middle school and elementary school teachers. So it has driven home to me that any success we have in Room 254 at Eisenhower is only built upon the great work done by other schools at Lawton Public Schools. So I hope I'll represent us well at state, and thank you for this honor. Thank you. Now, Mr. Kirchen, you just received an honor in the last week or so after the Teacher of the Year. What was that?
Our United Nations exercise was elected by Character Award as a promising practice that we recognize in October at our national conference.
National recognition.
All right. And then, thank you, Mr. Kirchen. Now, next, we're gonna have our Rookie of the Year, Haley Ellis, and I'm gonna go ahead and tell on her. At the very first teachers' meeting of the year, we were in Lawton High, I asked somebody to tell me what our main guiding principle was, and she raised her hand over all those teachers and said, "We prepare career-bound citizens." So, she's already one of my favorites, so...
Thank you so much. First, I wanna say, mine's a little bit longer than yours. I apologize. I am so thankful for this district. It has been so ... I've had so many people that are so supportive around me, and not only just the past two weeks, from the very first day in August to here, I look back, and I see how many people were there for me, from Dr. Deegan giving me, you know, a pat on the back, to my fellow rookie teachers being there anytime that I needed advice. I started thinking, what could I possibly come in here and say that principals or teachers that have been teaching for so long haven't heard before? And the one thing that kept coming to my mind is a question that I'm constantly asked, and it's teaching what you expected it to be. And a lot of times, that question can be so hard for some people to answer, or so easy, no, it's not. It's everything I didn't expect. But for me, it's exactly what I expected. I went to Cameron University, and through their program, I learned so many things that I brought with me to the classroom, but a lot of things I had to bring from my own experiences. And a first-year teacher, it can be a scary job to fill, especially with so many veterans around you in your school. And for me, I was given the opportunity at a young age to coach gymnastics. And when I walked into that gym, my eyes were open to so many different things. I went, and I saw tears that I've never expected to see. I saw so many fails, I took so many fails, that became successes. And most importantly, the love that I had from those kids is what kept me going constantly, and that's what made me realize I wanna teach for the rest of my life. The worst fear that I did face during coaching that a lot of people face their first year is parents, and I'm sure most of you guys are parents. So I did face that fear when I was 16-years-old, and the lesson that I learned is, you're never gonna please everyone. Everyone's entitled to their own opinion. Now, that doesn't mean that necessarily you're right about everything, and you don't have to listen to anyone else's opinion, but if you never try and you never fail on your own, you're not gonna succeed on your own. And my gymnast that I had taught me so much, I mean, they would come in, they would tell me ridiculous, crazy stories, they've cried to me, I even had a couple of sleepovers with 30 kids. And to this day, I look back, and I would do anything for those kids. And I know I'm going on this soap opera about my gymnast, but I'd like to honestly give the credit to them for teaching me how to become a successful teacher through everything that they put me through. And the question, going back to the question, it is exactly what I expected it to be because my gymnast allowed me to experience that at a young age. And the craziest thing that I faced was looking at my gymnast and being so frustrated with them because I could see so much more potential than they could see in their own self. Self-esteem in a kid tears them apart, and it's so hard, as an adult, not to just have them look into a mirror and say, "This is not really who you are, this is what you have the potential to be." And all of these things is what I expected my first year of teaching, and every last one of them I experienced. I experienced, you know, tears of joy whenever kids had successes, tears of frustration from myself and my students, you know, meltdowns, self-esteem problems, questionings, discoveries, the frustration of wishing I had the magical mirror to show them the potential that I see in them that they somehow can't. And I see what they go home to, what they deal with in their home life, not all of them, but some of them, the situations that they come across. And the one thing that I've done is, I've opened up personally with my kids, and I've told them, you know, "I've been there, I've done it, I've battled the battles that you're battling today, and I'm here for you." And a lot of teachers won't go on a personal level and explain to them, you know, "I've failed my own self, these are my stories, yada, yada, yada." But to those kids, that's how you gain that respect, is you just let them know that you've struggled, that you've understood, and that you're there to make them see the potential and the success that they can achieve, and that you're on their team through every fail that they take, because all those fails are gonna lead to successes. And we're here to make career-bound citizens, and if we're not there to pick them up whenever they're failing, I mean, that's our job. We need to be there, and we need to step in at that point to change their life for the better. So, thank you.
Ms. Ellis and Mr. Kirchen, usually I say you can go, but you've gotta wait till after the ... We honor the crossing guards, so, okay? So, you can go after that. All right.
Do we have an architect's report?
An architect's report today.
And departmental report.
Departmental report. Ms. Sherman, I ask you to join me at the podium. And Ms. Ellis, I have two things to give out. Will you help us as well? Okay. And while Mr. Sherman and Ms. Ellis are approaching the podium, we have ... Oh, the other Ms. Ellis. All right. And we've asked our crossing guard today. I wanted to ... And the reason, now, Ms. Ellis, Friday, I think you're having a training with the crossing guards, because everybody works on Friday, and we need to take time off, so they're having one of their first trainings, and I don't know how long, so thank you, Ms. Ellis. But we wanted to honor our crossing guards, they work in some of those dangerous conditions in these places. They work several hours.
And even weather, too.
Weather, weather, some of them work for an hour a day, twice a day, at different kinds of ... They're part-time, it's almost a volunteer position. So, what I wanted to do was take an opportunity, we not only have a certificate, because I like certificates, we also have the Chamber of Commerce that put this together for you. It's actually a movie pass to the Patriot Center.
Oh, that's nice.
Now, to get two people in on the matinee, because I just went the other day. So, I want to ... So, Ms. Ellis, getting that, but when I read your name, she said, "I'm gonna give you the certificate." And I sincerely want you all to know that we do appreciate you, and we really want to see what happens, which if you guys had shelf words each day, our kids would have some challenges. So, thank you all sincerely from the bottom of my heart. Everybody give them a big round of applause. All right. I know Ms. Charlamagne Campbell very well. I am a veteran of the good service. Monica Carroll. I don't know if y'all remember or recognize this, and Ms. Don Cook, our Teacher of the Year last year. Also a crossing guard. Catherine Esker, she takes care of the crossing street here. I think she's her most available. Edward Larson. Alan Marshall. My name is Stacy's daughter, I'm assuming, or daughter and friend that did the Lady Levis Maintenance. Edward Collins. Now, I think we've had one miss. We had somebody come in. Okay, we have two more. Roach. Norm.
Yes.
Yes, Norm is a little biased in our elementary school. You came in after we organized the seat, so hello, guys. Now, Norm, how long have you been doing this?
About 20 years.
20 years.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Berna Howard. There we go. And I believe Berna is out by Pioneer Park, correct?
Yes.
I've got about half of them pegged where they are. Isaac Mason, did he come in?
Isaac.
Patricia Ross. And that is all of them. And each year, for the last two years, we've had brothers at Christmas time when Ms. Ellis and Dr. Coke and I bring hot chocolate and donuts to them on Christmas break, and it's been the highlight of our Christmas. So, thank you all again for everything you do. I'm gonna make sure we deliver these over the next week, day or two, to the people that couldn't make it. But thank you all for what you do, and again, you're free to go now, or you're welcome to stay if you just wanna hang. Under my report, I have Item A, Consideration Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy DHAC, Staff Members and Social Networking Sites.
I've got a question on page two, item number five. We had a board training not too long ago that prompted us to stay away from this because of freedom of speech, basically because this is for staff members and social networking sites, and I understand, I appreciate all the involvement of what it does to work into a policy. I'll refer to Chuck Wade if he wants to chime in this as well. My fear is that if a teacher or a faculty member wants to go on social media on their own time after hours, they still have the rights in this country to be able to do so, even if they're against whatever we're doing, even if it's against a bond issue, and I know we hate to see that, but you really can't control that in a legal sense as far as those kind of freedoms. I did contact the OSSBA for confirmation with their attorneys, and they agreed with that of not proceeding with item number five if so desired, but I would like to get your opinion on that, Chuck.
Well, I just brought my attention this afternoon, but on first blush, I certainly see it as a violation of the ... Violation of the First Amendment rights of our staff members to impose that limitation upon them, and at this stage, that would certainly be my advice to the board and the administration.
Eric, what would you think about maybe us clarifying the language?
To say something like during school hours? Because I think during our time, that would be appropriate, but maybe, you know, in their own time, it would not be. I mean, it would be, or could be.
Again, that's gonna be awful hard to enforce because, you know, the teachers have ...
They have lunch hours, they have ... They have ... There's what is said, what's said today, which is, you call their ... Not the free time, but ...
Planning period.
No, thank you, I'm trying to think, planning period. Call it a planning period. And I really think that it's gonna be impossible to enforce if you tried to limit strictly to when they're on school, on school business, or school time. And you either accept it as is, or you reject it. It would be a fair debate.
Doesn't it seem like to me that by having Rule Four in here, where it talks about any areas where they are offensive or making false or vicious statements and stuff, wouldn't that be covered, and we don't really need Line Five? Because it's kind of ... Autumn file, because it's kind of overlapping a little bit if they're making vicious and ...
Well, here, when we adopted this revision, who was in charge of that? Is it ...
We ...
Ms. Ellis? Okay. Not to put you on a hot seat, but you can come over and chime in on this, yes, ma'am?
The consideration on item number five had to do with making online postings and realizing that some of those statements were indeed duplicates in item four. The intent was to ensure that designated spokespersons for Lawton Public Schools would be identified as such and would be able to make those comments. There wasn't an intent to discriminate or to avoid anyone from making any other statements, but that designated spokespersons would speak for, quote, "Lawton Public Schools," unquote. Others may speak for themselves.
Could we just clarify that?
Yeah, I mean, because you explained it well, but ...
I think it can be clarified, if we're talking about only ... If they purport to speak as a spokesperson for the Lawton Public Schools, then certainly it would not be a violation of the First Amendment rights to specifically make it a violation of policy for any others to attempt to speak in that capacity.
Right.
So, if that's what we're ... I mean, I have not seen this before, but if that's the intent of this, I think it could very be ...
In layman's terms, I understand what you're saying. If you want someone officially from the district to respond to some of these things on social media, it would be only by these designated spokespersons to represent the district, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I'm an attorney, but how do we put that out? Because when I read this as just a regular person pulling out a policy, it looks like the only way they can ever comment online and social media, if I am a staff member, is those only, like maybe Ms. Cordez or someone else that is designated to chime in on something like on Facebook or anything else like that.
I understand your question.
Yes.
The only thing that I can answer for you is that only designated spokespersons was the clarifying language. If that is not clear, and you decide that it's not appropriate, I will take it back and work with it again, and you may strike it for what your question is.
What if you put the word official?
I think it can be clarified, excuse me.
I like Lori's suggestion of adding the word official.
Official. I mean, that way, you could just add one word and keep the rest of the word.
Okay, does that take care of it, if we add the word official?
Where do you want the word added?
After designated.
With an official spokesperson, shall make any ...
Or shall ... Any official online posting.
Online postings, right.
The official online postings.
Okay.
Are you adding the term official also?
Yes.
Okay. I think that'll make it.
Once or twice? Once?
Just once. I mean, I'm just asking.
I guess the once is suggested that it would be on any official online posting.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the whole thing as intended?
Sure.
Only designated spokesperson for Lawton Public Schools should make any official online postings of or about controversial topics involving lawton public schools or students who are engaged in online discussion about policies.
That works for me.
That changes it tremendously. I mean, like I said, I appreciate all your hard work, and once you clarified where you were going with this, I can understand it. Okay.
I think that clearly clarifies the intent of it, and I certainly have no objection to any of that.
Okay.
And I do want to express to the board that I know that Ms. Ellis has put tremendous amount of hours into working on these policy revisions, and to the point that I threaten to call her someone else. That we know, that we remember historically, but I haven't gone that far yet.
Okay.
All right, so I make a motion to approve this with the one change on item number five, to add the word "in official" after "make any official online postings."
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Belter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right. That was a very good addition. Sorry, I switched pages. Item B, Consideration Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy ...
Not yet.
Are we ready for item B?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was telling her here.
Consideration and Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy DOAC, Support Personnel Suspension, Demotion, or Termination. And the only change on this was item 10 on page six, which was an addition related to the disclosure of information to minors.
Can I make a motion to revert?
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Belter?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item C, Consideration Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy EFBCA, Internet and Other Computer Networks Acceptable Use and Internet Safety Policy. Maybe not much changing in there, just a couple of words.
Any questions?
I'll move for approval.
Second, definitely.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Claude Belter?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item B, Consideration and Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy EFBCA-R1, Code of Conduct for Internet and Other Computer Access, Computer Network Access. Did you make sure I get there?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Belter?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item E, Consideration and Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy FE-R1, Transfers and Assignments.
Call the roll.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Belter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item F, Consideration and Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy FNC-FB, Lawton Public Schools Student Dred testing policy.
Why would we change the word from extracurricular to co-curricular? What was the purpose of that?
Item A, in a moment, I'll ask Dr. Coke to come up, because she worked with the team on that. DEIC, we had DEIC, it reviewed the policy, and matter of fact, they listened to the board's audio recording to make sure. We tried to capture the intent of the board. And one thing, we discovered that extracurricular, co-curricular helped, the definition actually helped capture the essence of what we're trying to do. Initially, we're trying to define, is this OSA athletes, is this anybody involved in a club? And what DEIC eventually, and with the coaches, the activity directors, the principals, eventually settled upon is if we use the term co-curricular, we can include basically any student in extracurricular activity that involves a sponsor, official sanctioned activity of Lawton Public Schools. What that would do, if a student is in a club that has a sponsor, FCA, archery, bowling, et cetera, they would be under this policy. A student, however, going on a field trip, which would, you know, that's an extension of the classroom, those students would not necessarily be in that. Because oftentimes, a science field trip is an extension of the classroom and not really an extracurricular activity. So this defined it as close as they could in a manageable format.
So, what you're saying is if they go on a field trip, if they leave the building, they go overnight, they stay somewhere, won't they have a sponsor?
Yes, overnight activities have a sponsor, so those students should be covered under this.
They're on day trips, like the museum.
So, you're talking about like if we decided to send them ...
the fifth graders every year go to Matty Beal, they wouldn't be subject to this policy. Of course, they'd be fifth graders.
Yeah, they'd be, probably not high school.
So we tried to make it, and I think they did a good job of coming up with a direct percentage that we could test, and they figured out a rolling percentage at any given time. I think they did a good job of working on this policy.
Also, I'd like to bring up, you know, that if there's any concern from anyone that maybe we're testing too many students and stuff, that we don't have a problem with them coming up with their own funds to test more in their particular program?
Good point. If, if this team or a, or a club wished to go over and above that percentage, then that is nothing, this policy does not prohibit that.
Now, we added this on page 35, the number will equal to 5% of the total population involved in school-sponsored activities. Now, does that change, what does that change as far as price is concerned? We, we had a, an estimated cost of how much this was going to be funded through the three high schools. Now, does this have an added cost, and if so, how much?
This is an added cost, and I believe it added 3,000, Dr. Pope?
Yes.
So that brings a total of what, do you know?
20,000.
20?
It's still campus within the 20,000, because Mike Moore, the district athletic director, had made the decision or recommended that if a student was positive, then that second go around, then the parents would pay for, the district would, and just that little tweak made the difference, so we still fell within the guidelines. Is Mr. Moore?
Yes, he's here.
Okay, and so, and I want to say, he has taken this and really actually made the difference to stay within the budget, and we also incorporated the all, and so, and I want to thank you all for that.
Jamie, let me ask you another question. When the student tests positive and they're required to receive counseling, okay, is that going to be a charge that we're going to pass on to the parent, or is this going to be something that our district is going to absorb, and will our counselors receive training for it, if so?
Very good question, and will you please address our recent email that we received from Ms. Moore, Ms. Frager?
We received a request from a petition called Team Court to accept the responsibility for doing any of the counseling with any of our students that have a positive test on this. And she said that is what they were designed for, they have the ability to do it, I have not given her an answer yet, but we did receive that information today.
And they would, they would take the expense, too?
They would take the expenses.
Wonderful, good thing, good for our district, okay, thank you.
It's pretty exciting that we have a community that I believe behind, and so the discussion has been very good.
Good deal, thank you so much.
Well, I think it's very good that we went from pilot program to one of our high schools, now to all three, and, and I think that's a good step, step in the right direction.
Move for approval. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Sherram?
Yes.
Commend for the, you guys' work that you did on this, to make this work, it's pretty fine work.
It's amazing.
Did a good job.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you for your effort to do so.
Item G, consideration action regarding proposed revisions to policy FNC-FD-E, Law and Public Schools Drug Testing Consent Form, updates the form to match the new policy.
May I speak to that for just a moment?
Yes ma'am.
On the front page, the first page, where we have all of the consents, I did not include the word co-curricular. I will include that word, if you'll allow me to do so, in all of the changes that say extracurricular, it will say co-curricular and extracurricular.
Move for approval with those changes.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Sherram?
Yes.
Item H, consideration action regarding proposed revisions to policy FNG, Student Acceptable Use of Personal Electronic Devices.
Okay, I do have a question, and Ms. Ellis, since you were so nice to stay at the podium, I think you had all to do with this. On page 43, item number one, I just had some concern because it is so restrictive, and I know kind of where we're going with this, I understand the concerns of it, but it basically says students are not permitted to video record on any personal device while on school property to include law and public school vehicles and school-sponsored events, which I take it to be, believe, like football games, basketball games, and if I want to record my son doing that stuff, I mean, or if a kid wants to do that, we're going to prohibit that. I, I just have some questions of why we want to be so restrictive with that.
The intent was not to be restrictive of individuals who want to do it for positive uses, but for negative uses, and so those may be exceptions that will be considered and won't be considered action items, but those that are considered action items will be those for negative uses.
Shouldn't we put that in there to be that way? The way it reads now, that's what I get out of it, that if we have a 99-yard touchdown run back in a child videos, they're not allowed to.
I understand we're trying to stop, but I just don't know how we, how we can police that.
I'll work that. It just takes some language to rework it.
Okay. Because I think that's good, if you, if you are telling me the intent of where we're trying to go with that, you know, I just, I don't mean to have knee jerk reactions, but you know, we live in a, you know, we live in a society where most everybody has these smartphones, and they're, they're basically videoing reporters, you know, wherever you go. And I understand that there may be a school fight, and that's recorded, and it gets uplinked on social media, I understand the concerns of that, but where, where you police that and how we do that is my, my question about that.
I'll rework that, if you don't mind. It'll come back to you again if you don't prove it, but that will be fine.
Anybody else have any concern? You want to just tape like a motion we're talking about? Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sherram?
Yes.
Item I, consideration action regarding proposed revisions to policy GIA, Distribution Information and Materials to Students. And this is related to student-
And this is just kind of reverse thing from, usually if anybody, you know, I think it's like for her purposes, like she gets children on there and she wants to post them, usually you have to get all these permissions, so basically, right?
They have opt-out forms at the schools.
Okay. So what are we doing, this is a media opt-out here form, so I guess basically, before the school year, I just say that I don't want my child in anything, and I just sign that form?
Yes, to make sure that we have it in policy, not just in practice.
Okay, okay, so we're, okay.
And so that it's available for 18-year-olds as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherram?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ellis, thank you for all the help.
Did you show Mr. Sherram the resident, the policy book before we came to the meeting?
Not really.
Will you make sure everybody gets one of these and one of these? I don't want to pass them down, because I have copies for you and Kathy, and everybody gets one of each, one of each for each board member. This is what we had the other day, right? In that little? Yes. Yes. And so I'm going to outline the process, and trying to chunk it up into, because it's 300 and something pages.
I understand.
So trying to come up with them, with a, with a usable, usable format. Okay, item J is information item, overview of Phase Two, School Performance Review, Business Operations and Facility Management. What we have here is, we're just talking to somebody today, we have a 330-page document, I brought mine, and, and how to, how to divide that. Last time we only did two departments, this time it did four separate chapters, we had two chapters last time. And so what I decided to do is, is kind of over the next, including this board meeting, do an overview tonight of the process, make sure the board has the form, and any suggestions you would like to add to this form, of course, that we'll do our report on, and the process and, and purpose of this. Of course, I've given out a handbook that kind of outlines this. Purpose of the review, of course, is voluntary, it's requested by superintendent, it's a review of district or district department, departments. The process, make sure everyone understands the process, is the OEQA contracts without a state vendors to perform the review, they subcontract with individuals that are both from Oklahoma and other states. They visit onsite, they request data, plus they do anonymous polls to staff, parents, and students. The cost of this district for this one is free, the first one we did pay a small sum, I think it was about $15,000. But because our free and reduced rate has risen so much between then and now, and I credit that to the principals doing their paperwork, God bless them, this service was free to the district, so we got free service due to poverty rate. The scope of the process, the school performance review can cover an entire district, or it can focus on only on targeted areas. Due to the size of law and public schools, we chose to target departments needs review. We had Phase One in 2014, Phase Two right now, and we could have phases in, in the future, which we do other departments. The last one we reviewed Transportation, Special Education Services, and we reviewed that one at the last board meeting. The 2016 reviewed Maintenance, Custodial, and Business Operations, and part of the reason we chose those is both departments, Maintenance, Custodial, were looking at possible changes and upgrades to how they do, they do things, as well as the business operations. As we're exploring the possibility of a bond, looking at our facilities, how do we make sure we're choosing the right upgrades for our facilities, et cetera, and Business Operations, we're looking, they did an incredible amount of automation, for example, our online applicant portal came online last year, this full year, June 30th, I believe, at 5:00, oh, it was 4:15 PM, see, Ms. Ellis was celebrating. And so as we, we thought it would be good to choose these two departments, or these two areas, because we're doing so much, and to have these experts come in, help guide us, we don't want to make mistakes, matter of fact, we had them, we targeted them to certain areas. The accountability process is the OEQA didn't have any authority over schools or school districts, and basically, it's up to us what we do with the, with the report. And I plan to, unless the board has any other, of course, to the pleasure of the board, I plan to, this is the second time we've done this, and I plan to follow the same accountability measures as we did last time. The first was the public report by the OEQA, which that was at a special board meeting in March, and public availability of the report and links to the OEQA report, which it is on our front page of our website, anybody can link on it. I will caution people, when you link on it, it doesn't pop up in a new page, it just downloads, it downloads immediately. Public presentation of the action plans, and over the next four board meetings, and if you look at the back, I have those dates, May 23rd, we'll do Chapter One, which is Maintenance and Custodial Operations, the next board meeting, we'll do Chapter Two, Facilities Planning, the next, June 28th, Energy Management, and July 21st, Business Operations. Because quite honestly, if we tried to do all of these in one board meeting, or even two or three board meetings, it would be a tremendous amount of time and, for a board meeting. The final report, just as we did last time, anywhere from six to 10 months later, we anticipate this sometime between Christmas and shortly thereafter, but definitely by spring break of next year, but hopefully by Christmas, we'll do a final report to the board, after the, the departments come and they do their reports. And again, one of the, the chief measure of accountability for this is just like the last report, it's presented publicly, reviewed publicly, and finalized publicly through Board of Education meetings. I want to outline some of the strengths of the process, it's open, transparent, and accountable to the Board of Education.
Do you want to just bring one thing up in your accountability here? I actually talked to them, and it actually belongs to the board, the report does.
Yeah, and of course it does, that's why we're doing it with the board.
And so the, the findings are up to the board to address, too.
Okay, absolutely, that's why we're doing it in board meetings, absolutely. Strengths of the, of the process, it's open, it's transparent, accountable to the Board of Education. It does compare law and public schools to like districts, it doesn't compare us to districts with 2,000 kids, it tries to find districts that are like ours. It uses publicly available data, and it involves some Oklahoma experts. Limitations, the data is two years old in most, in some cases, district comparisons are 2011-13, we're currently in 2015-16. What we're going to do behind the scenes is try to compile that data to complete the picture. The contracted firm is from out of state, but they do have Oklahoma's experts helping them. The process took a little longer than we thought, that's one of the limitations, so it's been over a year since they've done. And one of the other limitations, it is a snapshot, and so they're here for a short time, but they do a really good job of catching things, and I'm really pleased with the process. And again, our tentative schedule is below, we've already discussed that, the department heads will present their sections and their departmental plans to the board at the next few board meetings, and, and then we'll have a follow-up with accountability, we'll probably check up at some point with a final report to the board. We use this form, hopefully this is a Word document that we can expand, so it's not limited to just that little bit of space. But I wanted to kind of give an overview, my goal is, at the next few board meetings, to try to spend, like I said, if we tried to hit all of the 77 recommendations in one board meeting, we would be here all night. I want to give our departments plenty of chance and time to outline what they plan to do, how they plan to address these things, and plenty of time for board interaction and questions. So that's the overview of the process, and that will kind of kick off our review process over the next few board meetings. Any questions from the board or suggestions that we move forward? I want to incorporate them, as you said, Ms. John, as we move forward. Anything you would like to see different than what we did last time?
I got the pictures, I think the pictures are good to incorporate.
Absolutely, everybody has a copy of them, yes, absolutely.
What about the comments?
What about the comments section?
Everything in here, you know, as it relates to that section, everything in the appendices, absolutely.
I thought the comments for, for every section was, was very valuable, for each.
Yep, they're great, lightning. If everything is, you know, the, everything in the comments section and the appendices relate to the four chapters, so I think that all just lines up perfectly. Trying to get it in five board meetings, I didn't want to go any longer, but I wanted to make sure we covered it, so I'm open to any sort of format the board would like. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you all, that's, that's item J, and then real quickly, I do have some superintendent announcements. Good news to share, and, and then first of all, I want to thank the, the Law and Fort Sill Chamber of Commerce for getting our gifts together for our crossing guards. Again, that was, that's a highlight, I really appreciate them. Some good news to share, Kristi Hardy Husky of Asinewell Middle School was selected as a 2016 Fellowship of Christian Athletes All-State recipient under the direction of Ms. Husky and Ms. Linda Riley, the group has flourished to the point where there are 108 students at attendance at last Wednesday's FCA meeting, so that's grown. Lawton High sophomore Deja Reid was selected as a Leader Among Leaders essay contest winner at the West Point Leadership Worksop. She will receive a total of $700 for this honor, and Colonel Waters is not here tonight, but Colonel Waters brought, who used to teach at West Point, brought in West Point leaders